My name is Blake Drury. I'm with GAI Consultants. I'm leading the master planning effort. I've got Wes Schaefer here, who's part of the team. Frank Bellimo in the back is also part of the team. Andrew Shepherd had to leave to go to his son's band concert tonight, but he was here helping us draw plans all week. And so, we started off this week, just as a refresher, by talking about kind of the changing situation for downtowns. This isn't like a, you know, it was this way last week and this week it's different. But, over a long period of time, downtowns have changed from places of work and primary business to a place that is really about leisure, how people spend their leisure. And so, if we were doing this master plan 20 years ago, a strategy 20 years ago was, we need to figure out how to get a Publix downtown, and we need to figure out how to get a drugstore, and we need to figure out how to kind of reinforce and rebuild downtown the way it exists in our memories. And, some places have been successful in that. A lot of places have not been successful because, as time has gone by, the fact that, you know, with, for instance, one of these devices, I can buy almost anything and have it delivered at my house almost before I get home, that's changed the calculus of place for all of us, and especially for downtowns. And really, what downtowns are positioned to do is to be able to deliver an experience that's unlike any other in sort of the environment that we live in, right? So, if you go out to the villages, a made new out of whole cloth place, the downtowns that they have tried to create, in a lot of ways, try to mimic and build off of the structure of traditional community downtowns. The great thing about Leesburg is, we have that structure of a great traditional downtown. We have lots of good building stock. We have lots of good street network. We have great park spaces. The thing is, we have to figure out, in this environment, where we are competing for people's leisure dollar, how is the community set up to do this? And how are we, as a downtown, able to offer that thing? So downtown, as a place, doesn't sell hardware, it doesn't sell hamburgers. It creates the environment where the things that people want and are seeking so desperately can happen. And so, if we think about it that way, the thing that downtown can deliver is intended to deliver experiences. It has to be a place that celebrates art and culture. It has to be able to happen on foot. Everybody's gonna, virtually everybody's gonna come here in a car, but they pretty soon have to get out of that car and get around on foot. It has to reach and touch the natural environment. We had some folks in here today who have a building downtown, and they live in Winter Garden. And, they said, you know, this is, what drew us to Leesburg is that the fact that you have this downtown, you have this connection to these Great Lakes, and they said, "We don't have that in Winter Garden." And so, a lot of people in Leesburg would go, "Well, we don't have Plant Street." And Plant Street's really cool, but that sort of unique connection to the environment, that unique place that exists only here in Leesburg, that's what we have to build on. We talked, just as a refresher, we talked the other night about this sort of rough framework of ideas, this notion that we need to do a better job of announcing and identifying the downtown. We need to do a re-involved and reinvigorated look at how some of the public spaces downtown work. We need to think about how we incorporate connections to the lake. We need to think about the trail system and the opportunity that that presents for downtown. So, these are all rough ideas that we put up on the wall and started to talk about over the week. One of the things that I think becomes really important, and we can't leave it out, is demographics. We talked about the different segments of folks who live in Leesburg and in the area that's a two-mile radius of downtown. And, what that starts to inform us about is that, if you look at the tapestry of different kinds of folks who live in this area, that would be our primary customer for downtown. You know, that customer is gonna skew younger. It's gonna skew to singles and young families, rather than seniors. And seniors really are sort of a secondary customer base for that place. And so, the way we create place downtown, there are lots of things that are sort of threads that are consistent between young families and older folks, and people with kids and people without kids. But then, there are some uses that may be attractive to one and not the other. And so, I think, as we think about market downtown, we need to really, really take that into consideration. The other thing we have to take into consideration is that we are competing for that leisure dollar. We're competing with other cities. So, I talked about Winter Garden. Everybody says, "Well, I went to Winter Garden, I love it." Well, we're competing with them. So, we have to figure out how to get folks who may wanna go down there to come here. We're competing with attractions. We're competing, frankly, with folks like Netflix and DoorDash. And so, we need to be able to offer something different downtown. And the good news is, the bones are here to be able to do it. So, as we jump into some of the ideas, and I'm gonna apologize in advance, we've been sort of drawing things and doing some renderings and trying to put the story together. And so, we haven't had a chance to kind of run through the story, so this may be a little bit rough. But, as I said, it's work in progress. It's ideas that are continuing to be sort of molded and created. But, we wanna be able to talk about them with you now. As we think about the identity of downtown Leesburg, and we think about sort of the vocabulary that we create in terms of the physical things that we build, the materials that we use, the style, the landscape, one of the really interesting things, you know, I said the bones are there. Well, we've got a gateway vocabulary that has actually been started. The, you know, on the west side of Main Street at 27, we've got a gateway that starts to speak to scale, it starts to speak to landscape and materials and sort of style. The really interesting thing is that it gets repeated once more at 12th Street, and then it sort of goes away. So, if you think about the main entrance into downtown from the north on 3rd Street, this is what you see, instead of the entrance that's on Main. So, one of the recommendations, I think, is that we really have to focus our efforts on identifying downtown from these major intersections and major places. We have to make a statement, get people off of the main road and into downtown. Does it mean that we have to do something just like this every single time? No, it doesn't. But, we need to do something that builds off of this style, this investment, this material and landscape in a way that starts to build a picture of what Leesburg is and is going to be in people's minds. One of the other interesting things that we've seen is, if we think about what the next customer experience is as you move into downtown, from the north, from the south, and in the future, we'll talk about potentially from the east and west, you cross a trail. So, you can think of the trail as a fantastic amenity for folks who are, folks of all ages, who are into active transportation, who like to run and to ride. It's a huge amenity for that. Lots of towns would kill to have the trail network that you do in downtown. We'll talk about how we connect it better, but one of the identity-building opportunities that we have is that every time somebody drives past and crosses this trail, that's a chance to say, "This is a really great place. This is downtown Leesburg. Let's have some expression of what they're going to expect to see when they get to Main Street." So, in a real sort of diagrammatic, simple way, if we can have some art, if there's a place where we can start to incorporate art into the trail, if there's a way that we can start to incorporate shade, the trail's a very low linear thing. If we can get shade and start to build vertical things, we've immediately made, we've immediately enhanced that place. On the trail itself, if there's a chance to have an information kiosk or signage that starts to say, "This is a connected place that extends beyond just what you can see that way or what you can see that way," that's an opportunity that we have to take. And frankly, it's one that, on the scale of investments, is actually, can be a fairly big impact for a fairly small investment. As we think about kind of the way we enter downtown, we've talked about from the west, you know, the streetscape along Main Street is growing in 20 years now, it looks mature. We'll talk about sort of the experience coming in, but it looks like a main street. It actually delivers on that promise that we make at the entrance. As you come down 3rd, you know, you don't get exactly the same sort of look. You get sort of utilitarian street, although you're headed to the heart of downtown, so it's a little different than Canal Street, which sort of brings you to the edge. You're headed to the heart. As we think about A Streets and B Streets, this is immediately an A Street opportunity. We think that it potentially could look a bit more like this. It could actually look like a downtown street, rather than a street that's headed through a transitioning area to downtown. So, that promise of what you're going to get when you get downtown has to be visible much further up the line than it is today. One of the really interesting things to us is that, if you think about Dixie, you know, 2nd Street is, there's a directional left to get into downtown. It's not signed, there's no, no one's telling people to come that way. It actually brings you into the heart of downtown, rather than 9th or Canal, which are obviously opportunities and places to make gateways. But, 2nd can be a much more direct way in. It sort of looks like, you know, any old street. I think there's opportunities, because particularly the city owns the, virtually the entire east side of the street up to the trail, we think there's an opportunity to create a much more sort of downtown street feel, potentially with a multi-use trail on one end that lets us get to Dixie and get to Venetian Gardens, and then actually be able to open a discussion with DOT to say, "Okay, if we can get bikes and pets here, how do we get them across to Venetian Gardens? Can we do a pedestrian actualed signal at that point? Can we, you know, can we think about going under or over?" Lots of things start to get on the table, but they don't ever get on the table until you can get people to that point. So, one of our, one of our sort of bends is to say, "We need a better way of getting people around on foot and on bikes, particularly if we can connect it to the system that we already have, which this does." If we then, and so, I've tried to organize tonight kind of around the experience of a customer for the downtown area. If we think about the other way that folks might approach downtown from the east through Main Street, you know, this is what we get. It's a pretty utilitarian sort of street, which makes total sense because, you know, we have trucks, we have industrial vehicles. It needs to serve a purpose. But, there are also ways that you can design that to accommodate other potential users. So, if we think about one way to maybe do it, we might be able to maybe paint protected bike lanes on here. Still leaves it a little wider for trucks. If the utilities could go down, we could get more landscape. Not a very urban street, but one that starts to hint at that idea that they're, that you're going to get on Main Street once you cross Canal. East of, in that same segment, so sort of east of the trail, one of the opportunities that we've shown over on the framework on the wall is an idea that where the trail ends at Canal, that railroad right-of-way that the city owns actually continues. It goes past the site where the pool is being relocated and actually connects back to Main Street. If the trail's extended there, once it gets to Main Street, we think there's actually opportunity to rework the street to potentially get that bike facility on one side of the street. So, that trail can now actually extend to 441. And as we think about kind of the regional network and the ideas that the county in particular has about trail networks, about connecting Mount Dora and Taveries and Taveries and Leesburg, instead of taking that all the way on 441 to Canal and down Canal, if we could bring it, if we could get off of 441 and the sort of experience that you have as a cyclist on that road, and get it to Main Street and bring it in Main much more directly in a different sort of environment, we're gonna create a much better entry sequence into downtown, okay? So, we've talked about kind of gateways and identities and how we approach downtown. Wes and I did a really interesting experiment. We decided this morning that we were gonna drive downtown as though we'd never been here, and that we didn't know where we were going, and we were just gonna go to downtown. And we were just gonna follow the signs, right? So, we're on 27, we come up 27. Normally, we'd take Dixie and sort of come in the back way, but there's not a sign for downtown there. There's a sign that says Venetian Gardens. It says, I think the college is signed that way. So, we kept going, and we get to the sign for Main Street, and it directs us to the right, so we turn in. And, we go through the gateway, we get the delivery of, "Okay, this is interesting. It feels a little like downtown, but actually downtown's, nope, it's not there. Oh, it's almost there, oh, it's almost there." And so, we pass the Methodist Church, and we know that the main sort of public parking is here in purple, so we're expecting to see like a vehicular directional sign in the style of the others that says parking. And, what we get is right, I forget it. Right up there, we get a small sign that's appropriate for a pedestrian scale, but a small sign that says "public parking," and it points us to a lot. So, we've missed that one, we keep going. There's an even smaller, little, very nice pedestrian blade sign that directs us to the right. So, we try to get in there, we get there, but that's the only place we can go. So, we sort of did this from different directions. When we're on 441, coming from Eustis or Taveries, the sign points us to Canal. We come down Canal. We know there's a big garage there, but there's not anything that's pointing us to that big garage. There's nothing, even on Meadow, that directs us to find parking. The garage itself, you know, you see a lot of downtowns where there's like cool marquee signs that say "parking" in here. They go, they make it as easy as possible to get in there so that somebody can make that transition out of their car and onto their feet. And so, when we count all of the parking spaces downtown, and we, you know, there's like a thousand or something, and we do the math of number of parking spaces to square foot of buildings, you get a ratio that's like three spaces per thousand somewhere in that ratio, depending on sort of how much is vacant at any given point. For a downtown, that's a great number, right? So, that starts to say, "Okay, what are the, what are the issues that are driving people to say that parking is a problem?" Because we hear in, everybody, you're nodding your head, we hear it, "Parking's a problem." So, when you dig a little deeper, access to parking is difficult. Parking proximate to where you wanna go is a problem. So, people are not inclined to walk very far. If you sort of put a one or two-block circle around each one of these major parking areas, what you see is that, you know, certain areas are good, and then there are gaps. And those gaps are sort of related to how far you are from central parking. And so, one of the things we think is really important is noticing that, you know, that entire west side is really, in addition to the on-street parking, is really served by that one fairly small lot. And to recognize that you've got a lot there that is tied up with those buildings. You've got a live-stream lot here that's tied up with the building. And so, being able to somehow, through a partnership or through some easement sort of relationship, being able to decouple that and make that open for public use and protect it from development, potentially even, you know, this is a city facility where that lot could grow, that actually starts to fill some of that parking gap that we think is really an issue. And, the other thing that we can't do as much about is, you know, if you think about the way a mall is designed, and malls used to be great examples. They're not quite as good as they used to be, but almost every mall that you could ever go to is designed the same way. They're about, you know, five minutes long, they're about 1,300 feet long. And from the entrances of the mall, parking is no more than about 500 feet. And they do everything they can to get you quickly into that controlled environment that, you know, you'll, you don't wanna walk 500 feet through, you know, asphalt that's not shaded. You want that to be comfortable. You'll walk the 500 feet if you have to. When you get in the mall, you'll walk 1,000 feet down and back, or 1,300 feet down and back, because it's really interesting and it's really broken up, and it's, there's something new around every corner. And so, you get that on Main Street. You don't necessarily get that on the side streets. So, we've got to get people better directions and wayfinding and access to the parking. We need to get a little more parking in certain areas. And, we need to make the experience, once you're on foot, a little better to encourage people to walk just a little bit further. I don't think we frankly want an environment where everybody, at any given time, could park directly in front of the business that they're going to. If you do that, you'd be full of parking lots, rather than buildings, number one. And number two, part of the benefit of being in the downtown is that I may park here, walk a block to my destination, and as I turn the corner, something else might catch my eye that day, and I might actually walk and go see that. So, that kind of unplanned exchange and the way that that works in the downtown is actually dependent on getting people to walk a little bit to go to their parking space. So, one of the things we've started to identify is, every place where we have one of these yellow marks is actually a place where we've gotta hit people with a vehicular directional sign that says, "Here's the turn to parking." These are, these are actually meant to be on Canal, which is just off the screen. But, we need to, we need to hit people directly that, "Here's where you get to parking, let's make it easy for them." We think that will go a long way to solving some of the issue. So, now, we've gotten people to park. We've gotten them to walk to downtown. We've got some interesting ideas about kind of how we might restructure some of the downtown place. For reference, this is, that's Main Street. This is Magnolia. You can see Market Street, just to the north. As we've talked about, how does the Main Street environment grow? And how does downtown grow beyond just Main Street? You know, I keep going back to this kind of five-minute distance. That's in virtually every Main Street that you're gonna find. That's how far the core of a Main Street goes. Places that grow actually grow as a district. So, how do you grow beyond just that one spine? And as you do it, how do you connect back to the thing that is the main driver? And, one of the things we've noticed, well, there are several. One that we talked about a little earlier was A Streets and B Streets. So, 3rd Street as the main way in, talking about that as an A Street and designing it the way we showed, as an extension of a, you know, proper downtown street with landscape and shade and sidewalk space. That doesn't have to be every street. And actually, if 3rd Street is that way, which 3rd Street is right here, maybe 2nd and 4th could be a little different. Maybe those are actually places where some services happen. We'll talk a little bit about, you know, details like, where does, how does trash get picked up in certain parts of downtown? Where does it get stored? One of the things we think that really is an opportunity is for Market Street to be something different, okay? So, don't wanna, we're on TV, I'll say it anyway. We've termed it "the mullet," all right? Not the fish, but the haircut, you know, the business in the front, party in the back. And, we did that because it was a really bad metaphor, but what we were trying to explain was, you don't wanna try to recreate Main Street somewhere else. It's got to be something that is different enough to complement it, and not, because if it comes across as a recreation of Main Street, it's gonna fall flat. And so, the idea is, we need to have a street that's a little different than Main Street. It probably needs to accommodate pedestrians in a little bit of a different way. It probably has to do some things with parking that maybe we don't have to do on Main Street. It also can be a place where, if we wanna shut it down and have an event there, it should look like a great place to have an event, too. So, we, through this drawing, have sort of indicated how... So we, through this drawing, have sort of indicated how Market Street might work, and we'll talk a little more about connecting it on either end. But I think that's an important place to start with the thought about downtown and then think about connecting in a north-south fashion to Market Street. We also spent some time thinking about and sort of looking at the map and understanding how property is sort of broken up, what ownerships look like, and, you know, we think there's a real opportunity particularly south of the trail for some infill residential. We're starting to see it on one project on Magnolia. We think that there are some other places where we can see, you know, sort of an 18 to 20 unit to the acre sort of development in there. And one of the really key pieces to that is this piece that is owned by the city that connects through here. This is, for reference, this is Second Street. So it's the eastern side of Second as it connects down. And then we sort of stopped short of this connection that we identified over there as a visual connection to the Canal and Dixie intersection, because we ran out of time. So I told you this is work in progress. I think that's a plan that we need to sort of be able to work through a little more. We've got a couple of versions of it over there on the wall. I hope it wasn't something I said. We've got a couple of versions over there on the wall that we've sort of worked through some iterations on. But I think in concept, creating a significant trail connection and a infill residential-dominated redevelopment is what we're talking about there. The form of it, you know, there's a lot of different ways to do it and we've been working through some of them. This is the one that happens to be in the presentation tonight. It doesn't mean that that's necessarily the way to do it, or the only way to do it. So if we think about, we talked about Market Street, and we think that extends really from First or Palmetto all the way through to the other side of Town Square and ending in the Antique Shop. And that's driven by a few things. One is that the block itself, north to south, is actually, it's super short, right? It's one building deep. There's buildings, though, that for modern uses are actually probably too deep. So there's an idea there that instead of being dead space that's in the back of a building, if we can create an address on Market, that some of these buildings are actually positioned so that they can open both to Market and to Main, potentially, you know, one user, potentially two different users. We think that that sort of solves one of the fundamental issues, which is, you know, having space that is not necessarily geared toward the way people operate businesses today. So we wanted to kind of figure out what that might look like. So this is on Market Street, I'm looking west. That's Third. You can see the green is Town Square. And the idea with this would be that, you know, we would build a street that is flush. So instead of sidewalk, curb, and street, we'd actually effectively raise the street up to the sidewalk level. Work with the mature landscaping that's there, but bring in planters to get some shade, get it on this side of the street so that when we have events, it starts to shade the middle street portion. It's a slow-speed street, it probably still has parking on it. It is safe enough for somebody to ride their bike on. And as you can see, that maybe there's potential for some of these businesses to start opening to the back. Now, the interesting thing, and one of the things we think is good about this, is if you had an event and there were no cars out on the street, it was closed down, there's no barriers. So the lady with the stroller over on the side doesn't have to kind of navigate that thing up and down. As you get tents and things in there, you're not limited on where they can go. It becomes a street that really is multifunctional. One of the benefits to it as well is that because it's up, everyone at the north-south streets that crosses it, so at Third, at Palmetto, at Fifth, would effectively have to go up to the street level and then back down, which is going to slow the traffic down some. And so it's doing not only multi-function between street and festival space, but also calming traffic on the north-south streets as well. So we think that's a real differentiator for downtown. At the end of it, we've kicked around some ideas for, we talked about kind of Town Square and, you know, all of the good and bad things that come with doing lots of different kinds of events there. We really feel like there needs to be sort of another barbell end to downtown in terms of a public space. But again, it needs to be something that's different, not trying to recreate, you know, a real formal sort of civic square. And so, you know, this is the parking lot across the street from the library. You've got Beacon on the south side of the street. And, you know, we recognize how convenient this parking is. We also recognize that maybe it doesn't need to be parking every single day of the year. And maybe there's a chance to, in this, this was an early sort of view of it, maybe there's a chance to design part of it as a park. Maybe we, you know, we clearly want to add shade, maybe we create a safer place for folks to get on and off the bus. Maybe that might be a way to do it. We ended with a little different view of it down on this end that says, all right, what really might work there is more of a hardscape plaza that has a shed in the middle of it. The shed is a place where you could do farmer's markets, you could do events in that spot, and then design the remainder of the parking lot north to the garage so that the horizontal part of it is the same as that plaza space. So every day you park on it. When you need to throw an event that's bigger than what can happen in the plaza space, you do it, it accommodates it, and it doesn't feel like, you know, you're having an event in a parking lot. It actually feels like you're parking day-to-day in a really nice plaza. We think that's probably the most flexible way to handle that situation. But, you know, as with any of these things that we're talking about tonight, as the project actually advances to get designed, there's a ton of decisions that need to be made. And so, you know, projects always get better as they go along. So that's sort of where we think it sits today, but certainly could be open to, you know, to maybe some refinements of that space. I wanted to put this diagram up here because when I said we had really small blocks on the Main to Market side, we also have really, really, really small blocks east and west. So the blocks are like right-of-way to right-of-way, like 105, 110 feet, and we've got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, you know, you've got eight of them. As a pedestrian, what that means is every, you know, what, 15, 20 seconds, if you're, as you're walking down the street, you're coming to a street to cross. You're coming to a chance to be exposed and potentially get hit. It's also a rich, you know, everybody laughs, but that's the, the reality is, it's an environment that has a lot of visual stimulation happening. And if we do things right, it'll have even more visual stimulation because, you know, you've got windows that are showcasing stuff, you've got people sitting outside and eating, we've got, you know, landscape that people are looking at, you've got traffic signals that hopefully people are looking at, but maybe they're not. There's lots of stuff going on on the street. As a pedestrian, every time you come to one of those intersections, it is dangerous. It's also dangerous crossing Main, but I think we have some ideas for how that might work as well. So in the notion of A and B streets, I think this is one of the few cities where you can actually think about potentially getting rid of a little bit of that network for cars and actually delivering that space to pedestrians, to dining, to other activities. And so what we wanted to show with this diagram was that even if conceptually, you know, Second Street did not go all the way through, but Third did because Third is an A Street, if Fourth Street didn't go through, but Fifth and Sixth, because they're the sides of the square, if they did go through, we actually end up with what we think is a much cleaner and better to walk and to understand Main Street edge. But the sort of question is, and we'll use Fourth here as an example, the question is, what does that space feel like? So if we were to do something like that, you know, here, you've got curb ramps, so you go down, you cross the street, you come back up. The sidewalks on either side are not very wide, so you're not going to do dining on, your dining really has to go into the on-street parking on the Main Street side, which in itself is not ideal. So if there are spots where we can create opportunities to sort of wrap that dining, you know, it might just conceptually look like this, where you get some things that can start happening around the side. The sidewalk stays up, so you don't have to go down and then back up. If you remember the diagram, one of the things we think could happen is that that space actually could, at that level, through the crosswalk, extend all the way across Main Street to the other side. And so then, if you're driving on Main Street, you would actually have to go up, level, and then down. And so if we're trying to reinforce a slow-speed environment along Main Street, that's a way to do that. There's examples in lots of downtown and town center environments where that happens. And actually, together with the other things that we're doing in the street, it's going to help make it safer for pedestrians. So for, you know, for this diagram, we said, okay, we probably want shade in here because, you know, we live in Florida, everybody wants to be in the shade, everybody needs to be in the shade. Maybe we get some lighting across the top. And then on the backside, one of the things that we think, so this is the opposite view looking up Fourth. One of the things we've identified with, you know, with everybody's help is that in places where we have general trash collection in terms of dumpsters, we don't see the clutter of lots of trash cans everywhere, lots of residential, you know, 80-gallon trash cans or whatever. In places where we don't have that, that's what we get along the sidewalk. And the sidewalk's narrow and they get nasty and grease-stained and they don't get picked up that often. And so one of the opportunities that we saw was potentially, if something like this were done, you could do a very tastefully done service yard. You know, you can, that's a, those are doors there that are designed maybe with a, I think she went with an orange motif there that kind of wraps around the side of it. Maybe we do a pergola entrance for the pedestrians, so we're sort of guiding people's experience through here, and then when the trash needs to be picked up, because this is at the end of Fourth Street, they just pull right in, pick it up, and go. So trying to get spaces that can do multiple things, in some ways is difficult, but in others, I think it can be a situation where, you know, we're thinking about, are there better uses for the space that we have? And does it make sense to take that space and allocate it to, you know, a seating area, to a wider sidewalk, or to cars? And in certain places, we think that getting the cars out of there actually would pay some benefits. So that's kind of the big things that we focused on. I'm sure I've left out something, somewhere that we've been doing. As you looked at the frameworks on here the other night, you'll know from the lettering, there's probably 40 of them. And we may have touched on 20 or 30 of them tonight. There, I'm sure, are others that we have not.
I thought the presentation went real well. Couple of different ideas, some ideas that we've talked about a lot, but I think it's important to get everybody's buy-in so everybody can kind of get focused and narrow and set priorities and goals and get it accomplished. So, and I think there were a lot of good projects in there, too. GAI has a little bit more homework to do. They'll formalize the report, probably bring it back to staff level, we'll take a review at it. Then we'll bring it back to the commission and start doing some commission reviews and then ultimately approve it. So we're probably a few more months out before we get it all wrapped up.
What will these changes, do you think, do to help with downtown Main Street events and activities?
I think with businesses, it's going to create the, it's going to create the idea that you want to come more downtown for the businesses and for businesses to want to open. And I think for events, it's just going to enhance what we already have, and it's going to make it look better, and it's just going to make even a better environment for it.
So I think several of the ideas that they brought to the table will help us really encourage community and sustainability for downtown. So when I say that, long-time use of pedestrians coming down or people coming down to downtown but spending the whole entire day and making it as part of their lifestyle, so that's huge. And that includes like the, they did some pavilions and some pedestrian areas where they were a greenery and, so just a lot of really cool ideas, really incorporating the concept of the trail system and making sure that it connects with the neighborhoods that are around. So I'm encouraged, I think it's really great, and I love the fact that they really want to use arts as, to build that experience.